Yeah, you got Pastor.
I was gonna say, that was the Pastor voice.
Pastor.
I just got Pastor.
I'm gonna come sit down. Okay, hook it up.
No, you're just dying to get back in all these numbers here. All right, I think we're around page 101.
All right, yes, there we are. Sixty twelve communications. Page 101, variances on 102. Those are all salary, pension, and healthcare variances for the two new dispatcher positions. 103 is just the informational, as you see, it's zeroed out on fiscal year '22 for the change from code enforcement to the building department. We are at fire control, sixty-five-ten on page 106. This will encompass the first variances on 108 for fire control. Professional services, fifty-three thousand five hundred. The department has an increase in this element due to the standard of cover deployment analysis, which gives guidance and assistance in the distribution and concentration of fixed and mobile resources of the organization. This ensures a safe and effective response for the fire suppression, medical services, and specialty response, including homeland security. The ISO audit in 2019 demonstrated, and they were able to only achieve a four-point, four-point-eight points out of a possible ten due to the lack of recent deployment studies. And then one of the contributing factors found in the department was not achieving the ISO rating of A1. So that is what 31 will increase to in order to achieve that. Thirty-one oh one, medical care, thirteen thousand four sixty. They're forecasting, forecasting an increase in incumbent medical clearance costs due to a potential increase in staffing and unexpected vacancies. Forty-six dash oh-two, vehicle maintenance, fourteen thousand seven fifty. The department experienced an increase in vehicle maintenance costs due to an aging fleet, anticipated continued maintenance issues with the current reserve fleet, and the department has been working on getting exhausted fleet rotated and replaced. As you recall, in the 120, we've already put in for another truck to be bought, and we continue on that search. Uniform exempt from wages, fifty-two dash sixteen, ten thousand one seventy-five. This is an increase in staffing and CBA fiscal allotment for union members. The calculations are listed there at fifty times four hundred each, sixty-five-ten, in the sixty-five-ten, as well as staff, six times four hundred in the sixty-five-ten. Plus, increase of department-paid uniform shirt allotment for PFTs, physical fitness trainings, and training collaborative Class A uniform outfits. Fifty-five, training, twenty-eight thousand five hundred. Formal leadership succession training added to tip of the spear. This is a 30K course for the entire department to attend. EOC or emergency operations, division, Department Division sixty-five fifteen, page 109. Explanation on variance, the only one we have is thirty-four hundred, element or other contractual services at twenty-one thousand nine five five. This is due to the additional NIMs training for the city staff. Sixty-five twenty, emergency medical service, also known as EMS. On page 113 is your variance report, starting with forty-five, insurance, nineteen thousand sixty-five. This is a citywide increase in insurance cost factored by finance. Forty-six dash oh-one, maintenance contracts, twenty-three thousand four fifty-eight. The EMS division has been impacted fiscal in this element due to two reasons. The Digitech EMS building software renewal resulted in a twenty-three thousand dollar per year increase in pricing. Additionally, the state had a recommendation to increase the managed care program funds to seventy-three thousand nine twenty. This resulted in thirty-one thousand four hundred and eighty-five and ninety-one cents increase over the previous year's program. They gave the current SFI, FF, F, SFY IGTs at forty-three point four K for the MCO Public Emergency Medical Transportation Transfer for Medicaid billing payments. For sixty-five twenty-five, page 114, starts fire prevention. And there are no variances to report for them. Page 115 is, begins civil engineering, that division under the Public Works Department, seventy-ten. I have no variances over ten thousand to report on page 116. Moving to streets and drainage, seventy-twenty. No variances to report on page 119. Traffic control, seventy-thirty. Variances on page 121 include element number thirty-four hundred. This is in the 100 fund, as they also manage this fund. Is, forty thousand is for the first year of contracting, restriping in zone one and two.
How many zones are there?
Seven.
Seven zones? So is that over, like, we'll just three or four years and then just kind of keep it rolling? Or is it? I like the idea, I just, there's areas that need it.
Yes, sorry. Yeah, like I said, there are seven zones. Like I said, we just have a three-man crew, so we've been having a hard time trying to keep up with those. So yes, it is intended to be able to continue going through. Typically, striping lasts between six and seven years, with it being really reflective. So we are hoping to be able to have a program where we're constantly keeping it up with it.
Perfect, thank you.
Fifty-two hundred, element in the general fund for this division, thirty-four thousand three forty-eight. This is the first year of implementing the sign replacement in zones one and two. Page 122, this is the end of the general fund coming up with Parks and Rec, seventy-five-ten. Variances begin at 123 for the Park and Recreation, the Parks Division. Thirty-four hundred, other contractual services, ten thousand. This is additional aquatic vegetation spraying for the north side of the burms at Lakefront Park and the ranch. Forty-three hundred in utility services, a hundred and two thousand seven ninety-five. Garbage pickup twice a week for all the parks per solid waste, Chisholm Park Utility and 901 Virginia Avenue Utility. Forty-six dash oh-one, maintenance contracts, twenty-five thousand nine hundred. The ranch, water monitoring. This also is a variance due to the downtown sound system, cannery park termite treatment, and the equip, and equipment machinery, maintenance, excuse me. Sixty-three hundred, other improvements, a hundred and forty-six thousand. This is due to converting two tennis courts to six pickleball courts, lighting for Ted Broda tennis courts, repair Chisholm Park Pavilion C, roof for soccer field restroom and concession, and the shade at O.P. Johnson Parks at a citizen request, and finally, the columbarium pad section I. Sixty-four hundred, equipment and machinery, fifty-two thousand. In relation to adding debris blowers, utility vehicle, personal estate columbariums, again in section I, and replacing the 2006 and pro infield groomer. In seventy-five twenty, the Recreation Division, element number thirty-four oh one, instructors' commission increased by fifty-two thousand. They added-
Ms. Matheny would like to ask a question.
Sorry, thank you. First of all, what's a columbarium? That's not really my question, but what is that?
You keep the niches for when you cremate individuals?
Oh, okay. So convert two tennis courts to six pickleball courts? Are they still gonna be tennis courts? Or are they? And which courts are we talking about?
Now, the tennis courts on Godwin will be converted into the pickleball courts. There's already lights there, and then to, so people can play tennis at night. That's why we're lighting the Michigan Ave ones.
So it's gonna be just like the other ones in the middle of town where you could play pickleball or tennis?
Well, yeah, I mean, you'll always be able to play tennis. Pickleball is so popular right now that we just, we have to convert more courts to play pickleball, tennis. There's still people that play tennis, but not as much as pickleball. But they could still play on the same court, yes.
Okay, that was up.
If you'd like to join us on Wednesdays and Fridays at 6:00 PM for pickleball, please come see us.
I thought you guys did kickball. You're doing both now?
Pickleball is really, really popular.
Mm-hmm. I just wanna, I just didn't know if, like, you no longer could play tennis on them, or if you could do both.
The instructors' commission, fifty-two thousand, was adding two wedding planners for the ranch, estimated at a hundred and four possible rentals there. Sixty-three hundred, other improvements, a sixty-two thousand dollar increase. This is to seal and restripe the parking lot and curbing at the community center, and redesigning the front office at the community center as well. Rating seventy-five twenty is what I just read you for variances. That follows 126, starting on page 127 is the pool. Seventy-five thirty-five has been moved to Parks and Rec under, with Turf and Landscape. One thirty has seventy-five forty, landscape, maintenance, and beautification. And page 132 holds the variances for the aquatics division, the turf and landscape division, and the beautification division. Fifty-two hundred, seventeen thousand five hundred, operating supplies. This is to replace four signs, replace two pool covers, add a camera to the splash pad area at the lakefront, and purchase five yoga boards. In the turf and landscape division, this is the newly assigned Parks and Recreation, so that's why you see variances, as all accounts were new and added when we transitioned this division to Parks and Rec. And beautification division, thirty-four hundred, other contractual services, ten five. This is for security for events. In the forty-three hundred, utility services, forty-one thousand thirty, this is the special event garbage collection per solid waste. And then forty-six dash zero zero, repairs and maintenance, twelve thousand due to the ADA deck replacement at Peck Horn Trail, excuse me, Park Trailhead.
What kind of security are we talking about here? I mean, what does that mean?
I was gonna say the kind of-
Why'd you run back over there? We're not through with you yet.
I got a question too, so don't leave.
The security for the events is we hire outside security company to come in and do the security. It's cheaper than hiring the police, and the police have actually suggested that we go that route.
All right.
That's for city events?
Yes, city events. So it'd be for like Fourth of July, New Year's Eve, the bigger events.
Okay.
So I had a question on the fifty-two zero zero, one seven five zero zero. I just wanted to be like Wendy for a minute. Is there a possibility to add a little bit of money to this, to put some shade and seating at the splash pad? You know, for people watching their kids running around? Is there any shady spots for them to sit?
At the lakefront?
Mm-hmm.
Hmm, no, I mean, you have to sit closer to the playground to get the shade.
Yeah, so I was wondering if we could maybe add a couple park benches and maybe some way to shade it?
Yeah.
If, if everyone was okay with that.
Yeah, I'd appreciate that. I keep taking my granddaughter there and I have to sit in the sun, so.
Yeah, sure. I mean, we can, we can put benches and shade there.
Yeah, that would be great, if we could just add a little bit there. I think that would make it so much more enjoyable for-
Okay.
The parents-
Yeah.
And grandparents.
For us old people.
Well, the ones who burn, you know.
So that budget's set at ninety thousand four hundred. You're gonna need more budget, or you're gonna work within the confines of that budget? I'll have to see.
Anything else?
No.
Thank you.
Special rec facilities in Marina, seventy-five fifty, on page 133. That includes banquet halls, your administrative and general, and that, ladies and gentlemen, is your fifty-nine thousand seventy-one, fifty-nine million seventy-one thousand one hundred and eighty-four general fund budget.
And I did have a question I forgot to ask. And it was on the civil in the striping section. I know we've talked about it before, of making Fifth Street, or at least making another stop as people are heading north-south in the drag strip from Tenth Street to the lake shore. Is it possible to look into the project cost of that, to try to get that this year, next year sometime? Doing stop signs and changing those intersections?
We can definitely, yeah, and they are on top of it. We can definitely do that, and then, you know, look for the cost and bring it back at a later date.
I don't know what zone that is.
Yeah, I'll let Kevin talk about the technical side of it, but financial, I'd rather come back at a later time.
Are you, I'm sorry, Kevin, I'm from Public Works Director. So are you looking to make them all, all-way stops? Is that what you're talking about? Because I know at one point there was talk about possibly trying to make Fifth Street a through street, and then there's also been talk about trying to make all-way stops. And so I guess those are two separate ideas. And so when you're talking about that you want to change the intersections, what were you encompassing with that?
Whichever of those makes the most sense. Right, you know, sometimes we just prescribe things that just don't make sense or don't work.
I know.
Whether it be-
[laughing].
I was trying to generalize, we, okay. I'd say things that don't make sense, all right, it's fine. So, you know, it'd be nice to have another east-west corridor, but then that turns into a drag strip. So it could be a couple four-way stops, or all of them, and just to slow, I get a lot of complaints from people of just the drag strip.
Right, and like I said, and I know, I've done, I've had a couple of traffic calming applications, that sort of stuff. The biggest issue with trying to determine all-way stops when they're not warranted is stop signs are not really made for traffic calming.
Yeah.
And the issue with trying to make it an east-west corridor is the crowns of the road are set up for north-south traffic. So if you're trying to make a full-speed road going east-west, you'd have to go and reconstruct some of the, the majority of the intersections because of, just because of the way that the current intersections are set up, that they're made for the east, for the north-south, the crowns are made for north-south. So I said, so there's a couple different things, but we'd be glad to be able to take a look at and provide an evaluation of that entire corridor through there.
Good, because I don't want what, I just drove some, drove like Brack Street in Kissimmee the other day, because we were looking for a house that someone grew up in, and they had these speed bumps, so you can only go like three miles an hour, or forty miles an hour over, and it feels about the same. And I just don't want people pushing for that if we can make it, make it make sense with stop signs or something else.
I support us looking at it. I mean, you know, I know exactly-
Is that Lake Shore?
No, not on Lake Shore, on the north-south roads going to the lake, because, I mean, we all see it.
Right. Well, and I know there's also some, if you go between 13th and 17th, there's those stop signs usually where the light intersection is at. There are some of those ones around 15th Street where they have all-way stops also, because of the, because obviously the areas where they have the lights on 192 usually are more the north-south corridors for people, you know, going to Lake Shore and that sort of stuff, as opposed to, like I said, and then the ones that don't have the lights typically don't, don't quite have the same amount of traffic on them. But I'll be glad to take a look at that for y'all.
Yeah, I like it.
Yeah, consistent. You have anything else? Okay.
Moving to the 420, or the Water Fund, seventeen million nine hundred and eighty-one eighty-eight is the budget proposed for fiscal year '21-'22. In your little package of side pages, you received a variance update report that looks like that. You will notice it'll say for this, the first one is the sewer, 430, seventy-six-two. When we get to that division, this is what we'll reference for the variance, because there were some things we needed to update. I will let you know that. It references the page that it's on, like, if you notice, it'll say page 161, that's in your book. That's where the variance is. When we get there, I'll note it for you. Customer service, seventy fifty, for the water department is the first division, and our thirty-one hundred, professional services, eighteen thousand was the increase. Variance was due to funds, added funds for internal financial control and business process reviews. Thirty-four hundred, other contractual services, increase of ten thousand one hundred. This was associated with the CIS version four utilities billing upgrade. The third-party electronic services for credit checks and payment processing have increased due to growth as well. And then forty-six dash oh-one, maintenance contracts, ninety-two two six six, is the annual contract increase for the AUS, the billing software, and added funds for text power texting and data voice outbound calling software for customer notifications.
How's that working out? I've heard good things and bad things about the, that texting program.
Outside of my scope.
Hello, Cameron Crandall, Deputy Director, Environmental Utilities. The data voice outbound texting, there were some hiccups when we first started, but we're gradually working through them all, and we think we're reaching a lot more customers than we would, and it's definitely a lot more targeted than the, what we were doing before, which was the reverse 911.
Okay, and then you guys are working together with PIO Office on getting the word out there, because I don't even think I've registered my address with my phone number to do that.
Yeah, we're trying to, we just finished a drive to increase participation with mobile numbers and stuff for customers.
Okay, thank you.
Do we ever do anything like a, sign up and get five dollars off your bill or something, you know, to get, I mean?
I'm signing up three times.
[laughing]. Just wondering if that was, you know, you get a five-dollar credit on your bill or something like that, just to-
Daily.
We've done something like, for paperless billing, you can enter to win like an iPad. I'm not sure about the updating customer service, but we could talk about that with Marjorie.
Yeah, a giveaway of some sort, I mean, that's-
Yeah, I just think, like, I'm, I'm never, I never, giveaways don't get my attention because I never win. But if it was like five dollars off your bill or something, I'd be like, sure, I'll put my phone number in there, I don't know.
Five times thirty thousand is a lot.
But it'll save you, right, to get a-
A lot, or a specific number?
Just saying.
You usually have the specific number to the bank.
Write it down. All right. Water treatment, seventy fifty-one. Page 140 is the commencement of that. 142 is the variances, thirty-four hundred, other contractual services, thirteen thousand, due to adding the line, adding the line item in this account, and landscaping contract with Parks and Parks Department back to the budget. Forty-six hundred, repairs and maintenance, fifty-nine thousand eighty-two. The variance accounts, sorry, this is, sorry. Comes from adding the line items, relining of contractors at waste, or, sorry, WTP number four, overhauling of the security gate at WT number four. Forty-six dash oh-one, maintenance contract, seventy-eight thousand five. This variance is due to moving the light items such as tank cleaning inspection, security system, fire system, site secure, the DI water system to this element from forty-six hundred, and an increase in the maintenance price to clean the elevated towers, as well as an increase in cost to clean the ground storage tank, and an increase in cost to service the generators. Fifty-two hundred, operating supplies, seventy-five thousand seven oh eight. The variance is due to an increase in the price of resin, salt, chlorine, and lab supplies.
I don't know where that's going. Sorry.
Sorry. Seventy-four hundred, equipment and machinery, forty thousand. This is an increase due to replacement, a replacement vehicle. Water line, seventy fifty-two, page 143. Variance is located at page 145. Thirty-one hundred, professional services, a hundred and twenty-six thousand six. They added a ROW permit, SCADA transmission system improvements, condition assessments, assessment management, water main replacement, and fire protection master plan, and operational, operational efficiency consultant. Thirty-four hundred, other contractual services, one hundred and forty-one thousand eight ninety-five. Added the GPR locating services and meter replacements by contractor, and also increased the asphalt replacement amount. Finally, in sixty-four hundred, equipment and machinery, four hundred and sixty-two thousand six fifty. This was an increase to all equipment being moved from capital accounts to the sixty-four Seventy fifty-four, INE, also known as instrumentation and electrical division, page 146, variance on 147. Other contractual services, thirty-four hundred, ninety-five five is the increase. The INE division is new and used to be included in other budgets. This was transferred from another account. The INE was created last year, and that full budget was allocated last year, as it was just developed, so this year they're fully giving it and allocating its due budget. Fifty-two hundred, operating supplies, thirty-four eight, added telemetry control units, the TCU, to DFS software, lift station repair items. And there's a recommendation that it should really be moved to INE wastewater, or at least ninety percent of it. We appreciate the recommendation. Water administration, seventy fifty-five, page 148, variance located at 150, page 150. Professional services, thirty-one hundred, seventy thousand six four three. This is an increase due to the addition of financial and tactical planning consulting and review of as-built and mapping. Thirty-four hundred, contractual services, increase of one twenty-three nine. This is an increase due to the addition of temp employees, costs, and IFIS contract and communication outreach for water conservation and other outreach. Forty-nine dash oh-two, the rebate program, twenty thousand. An increase due to the addition of funds for a conservation outreach rebate program. Finally, fifty-two dash oh-two, vehicle fuel, twelve thousand nine hundred and thirty-seven dollars. This is an increase due to the cost of fuel increasing.
We have, under professional services for that, three hundred thousand for water resource master planning. Was that last year, or was that this year, or are we a two-year thing?
In this division, sir?
Yes, sir, we had money for water resource master planning last year and in this year as well, in the coming year.
And is that three hundred thousand a year forever and ever, or is that, I guess, what to use it for?
I imagine it's going to be tapering off. You know, we worked on our hydraulic master plan in this current fiscal year, we're finalizing that now. In the next year, we're looking for more of a one-water, water resources master plan, where we're looking at reuse water, wastewater, bottled water, alternate water supply, and all that all comes together.
Okay, so just better utilizing the resource we have, the water resource we have?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
Sorry. Page 150, excuse me, 1, 154 is your final, seventeen million nine hundred and eighty thousand one eighty-eight for all divisions for the Water Fund. 155 is your revenues for 430, or the sewer fund, and this year's proposed budget at fifteen million seven hundred and seven thousand six ninety-eight. First division, wastewater treatment, seventy sixty-one. Page 156. Page 158 is the variances, thirty-one hundred, professional services. They had an increase of three hundred and sixty-one thousand two fifty. They added funds for the SSWWTF expansion master plan, SCADA master plan, and upgrade and conceptual REO's augmentation studies. I failed to probably note it to you, but in your little packets where you have a highlighted yellow, these are all, through all funds, all your professional services comparative to last year, to this year, with explanations, because some of them had budget transfers throughout the year. So we explained them for you, just in case you wanted additional reading, and wanted to make sure that it lined up within the thirty-one hundred, professional services.
And on the SCADA master planning, is that to get current lift stations on, is that the water meters as well? Is that all the above?
Doesn't really have anything to do with the water meters, that's our AMI system, but yes, the idea is we have SCADA master plan monies in several of the different divisions, because we want to do a whole department-wide SCADA master plan, looking at getting all the lift stations. Right now, we only have telemetry control units where we get just really basic information from lift stations.
On off.
We want to upgrade, exactly. You know, high-level alarms, you know, pumps running, as much information as we get out of those as possible. And we're also going to be looking at, this one specifically, looking at the wastewater treatment plant. There's, you know, differences between the SCADA systems at the water plants and the wastewater plants, we want to bring those together, and the lift stations as well, the kind of three different systems. We're looking at a system that'll marry them all together, so they can all be read on the same screens from anywhere.
Perfect.
Page 159, seven sixty-two is the division wastewater lines. This is part of your amended packet. On page 161 is your variances. We have updated them, that's the first page of your variances. The first one is thirty-one hundred, professional services for one twenty, a hundred and twenty-five thousand. This is an explanation based on adding SCADA transmission system improvements, condition assessments, asset management, sewer main replacements, and operational efficiency consultant. Thirty-four hundred, other contractual services, an increase of a hundred and forty-two thousand six oh eight. They added meter replacements, GPR locating, sampling from the SSOs, and sludge analysis testing. They also increased asphalt replacement milling and paving and sewer meter calibrations. Forty-five hundred, insurance, sixteen thousand sixteen. This is just the citywide insurance rates. Forty-six hundred, repairs and maintenance, twenty-seven thousand fifty-four. This increasing materials required for the repairs and replacement of the lift station, the pumps, the pipes, the valves, and the-
This increasing materials required for the repairs and replacement of the lift station, the pumps, the pipes, the valves, and the fittings. Forty nine sixty nine, this is the allocated admin charge, sixteen thousand thirty six, increasing payment to the city for general administrative services, procurement, finance, human resources, IT, et cetera, determined by the finance department. Fifty two hundred operating supplies, twenty five thousand five hundred and fifty four. We increased the lift station order control, electronics, weed killer, and cost increase on various items. Finally, sixty four hundred, equipment and machinery, eight hundred and seventy four thousand eight fifty. This was increased to all the equipment being moved from capital accounts to sixty four hundred. Page one sixty two gives you division seventy sixty four, which is the second page of your additional packet. The variances are located on page one sixty three. Element number thirty four hundred, other contractual services, and is an increase of ninety five five. The INE again is a new division, so they included the actual and full burden cost for this year. It was transferred from seventy sixty one to this division. Forty six oh one, twenty one thousand two fifty, increase in maintenance contracts. They increased the funds for contracts for the SCADA maintenance, the Allen Bradley technical support, and SCADA software and hardware updates. Fifty two hundred operating supplies, fourteen thousand four hundred, added telemetry control units, TCUs dash DFS software. This is the lift station repair items. Instead of fifty percent of this cost being in water, it should, it should be in sewer. So they reallocated this cost to sewer correctly and they recommend moving that. Stay with me, we're almost there. Almost there. Seventy sixty five, page one sixty four. We are at one sixty six is the page for the variance. Professional services again, thirty, fifty six thousand six forty five is the increase due to the addition of a financial and tactical planning, consulting, and review of as built and mapping. The forty six dash oh one maintenance contracts, fifteen thousand two fifty. This is an increase to, due to the increase in CMMs. Fifty two dash oh two vehicle fuel, twenty thousand sixty two, increase due to the cost of fuel increasing. If I didn't give you the numbers before, just for information that you may use, gas taxes based on the CPPI index went up twelve percent in the last month. Contingencies and other capital projects on one sixty nine, just a quick none for there. And fifteen million seven hundred and seven thousand six ninety eight on page one seventy is your proposed budget for the sewer.
On page one sixty nine, I don't see a corresponding professional services for that one hundred and forty thousand and the eight hundred and sixty three thousand. I don't know if that was just a summary?
One hundred and forty eight.
So that's the capital.
Oh, that's the capital, yes.
Okay.
Yeah, I didn't put the capital on there because we had the whole.
We'll do it again.
Yes, sir. Okay. Four forty sanitation, fourteen million sixty five thousand four twenty six. Refuge collection seventy seventy one. Variance on page one seventy four. Element number thirty four hundred, other contractual services, one oh six five. Increase in debris collection and disposal due to increased customer-based. Forty four hundred rentals and leases, one hundred and six, increase rental of two side loaders for two new routes until the purchase side loaders are delivered. And then forty nine sixty nine is just the administrative allocation charge for services provided by the division, an increase of one hundred and thirty two nine eighty two.
How long is the rental for a hundred and six thousand?
Last I heard was six months. Yeah, it's almost half a year, but Kevin may correct.
No, the, 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 the front end loaders, they have an eighteen-month lead time. So we just, we're just purchasing them right now, so we actually won't have them in-house.
Oh, those are the commercial ones?
Yes, the commercial ones, yeah, like I said, so, like I said, so we are having to have them all next year. We have to be able to have them because we have to add two new routes. We have, we're in the process of purchasing them, but like I said, but they have an eighteen-month lead time.
Fine.
Thank you, Kim.
Seventy seventy two, transfer station. Variance on page one seventy seven, travel in per diem, element forty dash zero zero, fifteen thousand four six three, six three. Additional tolls to deliver recycling to Lakeland Recycling Facility. Forty six dash oh two vehicle maintenance, thirty three thousand eight hundred. This is additional cost for the vehicle maintenance on aging fleet, one-time purchase of loader tire. Tires are inclusive in that increase. Forty nine sixty nine, again, allocated admin charges are the additional cost of administrative services provided by the division. One seventy eight, one seventy nine, fourteen million sixty five thousand four twenty six. Four fifty, this is the stormwater utility, two million five hundred and one thousand eight nine five. Seven sixty three, storm streets and drainage, page one eighty one. Variance on page one eighty three, element thirty four hundred, one hundred and forty nine thousand five hundred and eighty eight. This is the first year of implementing contracting for major ditch cleaning throughout the city limits. Administrative in general, along with capital on one eighty five, gets us to your grand total on one eighty six of two million five hundred and one thousand eight hundred and ninety five in expenditures and we are balanced there. Four sixty, this is the building fund, three million eight hundred and fifty three thousand five five four. Licensing and permitting, fifty five ten division. And I'm just going through, there are no variances over ten thousand. Just kidding. I just saw four, okay. Forty thousand, excuse me, forty dash zero zero travel in per diem, thirteen thousand zero seventy four. This is the added out-of-state travel for next year's budget year. Forty six dash oh one maintenance contracts, fourteen thousand twenty three, additional department software that will require annual maintenance, need additional licensing for the new staff. And then forty nine sixty nine, again, allocated admin changes, one seventeen five two five. Increase created by the growth in the building department in terms of number of staff, total budget, as well as the increase in citywide administrative costs. Sixty two hundred improvement and other, other than buildings, forty thousand. This is the addition to eight eleven Massachusetts for added record storage.
On that, that's those buildings over here?
Yes, sir, back here.
Forty thousand dollars, is there off-site storage that you lease that would balance that out or? I don't know. Seems like a lot to just take an existing room, but I don't.
The difficulty is it requires staff to go off-site and they, they don't have control of the, the environment there, I guess. That's what, the way I'd say it, and like I said, they have to get a vehicle and then go over there.
Oh, this is stuff that you continually pull in and out?
Yes.
Boxes of paper?
Long-term storage?
Yeah.
Is it boxes of paper?
Yes. Bakers boxes and stuff.
Because the county doesn't use county facilities because it's like four dollars a square foot or something like that to store things per year. They use, they have some place that they send it off to that's Penny's, Iron Mountain or something like that?
Iron Mountain.
So did we look into something like that instead?
Madam Clerk?
We've used Iron Mountain before. This is actually for records that do not have a long life expectancy. Iron Mountain, we only use for ones that are ten years or more permanent. The storage space that they're talking about over here would be the ones that are under ten years and they don't have a long life expectancy. And they would be for storage and it would be in this house over here instead of in City Hall, which is a more prime office space.
Could we look into the cost of that? I mean, because I think the way some of the departments do is they send it off to Iron Mountain and there's a log that someone keeps in every January one, somebody goes through, they recall the records that have met retention and then destroy them. And I just understand it's way cheaper to store them than in like a government building.
We can look at it, I've used them, I've used them before.
Great.
We'll take a look at it, thank you.
And then with the master plan at the campus, do those buildings go away or do they?
That hasn't been completed yet, that would be my intention.
Four seventy and, we have four seventy and the four eighty, the water and sewer impact fees. Which we visit in capital, sewer impact fees is the four eighty, five million six. Visiting capital. Five ninety is your new sanitation impact fee fund. Five hundred and forty six thousand four oh one is the projection this year. I'm on page two oh three and going through that. Two oh five is the final of that. Page two oh six is the five ten fund or mortar pool fund at one million eight hundred and eighty nine thousand. Sorry. No variances to report over ten thousand there. Five twenty is your health benefits fund and the workers' comp, which we never go line by line and straightforward with that. Page two fourteen is economic development, fifty five twelve. Sorry for flipping through pages here. On your attachment, this is the third item that we are correcting or adjusting. It is on page two eighteen, the variances, it is the third item on your packet. That's stapled, beginning with forty six oh one repairs and maintenance contracts, fourteen thousand two hundred. This is the annual subscription to the metro forecasting software. And eighty two hundred aids to private organizations, seventy thousand, new membership to regional chambers. Page two nineteen is the community development. This is your CRA six forty five fund, that is your fourth item. On your stapled sheet, variances are located on page two twenty two. We begin with thirty one hundred professional services. Eighty one thousand three fifty, increase due to the addition of the RMA consulting services. Thirty four hundred other contractual services, an increase of two hundred and thirty eight thousand six two five. This is due to two additional, additions of two officers, the purchase of two cars, purchase and installation of surveillance camera and licensed reader equipment in association with the adoption of the entertainment district overlay. Forty three hundred is just utility services, fourteen thousand nine three five, an increase there, porta potty rentals and dumpster fees for downtown monthly market. Fifty two hundred operating supplies, increase of fifty two thousand three, the downtown wayfinding signs. Sixty one hundred land, a hundred thousand increase. This is funding budget annually for the potential land purchases within the CRA. And sixty two hundred buildings, increase of two hundred and twenty thousand seven six eight. This is also budgeted annually for potential building purchases within the CRA.
Wendy?
Yes, sir.
Excuse me for one second. Bill, do we have in here the lease, the lease money for the parking lot?
No.
Is that in like operating?
Yeah, we can cover it through that, we talked about it the other day, yeah. The parking agreement.
What's that?
So if you recall, we had the parking presentation and council directed us to go and look at parking alternatives down at church.
Making that a parking lot, oh.
So myself and Kevin and, and Madam.
Yeah.
Matheny went down and we talked to them and they want to do it. So it's about five hundred a month is what we offered.
Yeah, the wayfinding signs made me think about it because we definitely, if we get it worked out, which it sounds like we are going to, we need wayfinding signs. And then I was even saying maybe, do we get some kind of a shuttle service on Friday and Saturday to like, you know, shuttle people back and forth?
What happened to the petty cab? I've never seen him here, but like downtown Atlanta.
Well, we were getting ready to do that right before COVID hit. We had had a plan, we were going to showcase it at a couple of events and see how it went. And then COVID hit and then we just haven't, we just discussed it a couple of weeks ago, bringing something like that back.
Cool.
Wonderful, we are at other schedules that we'll highlight on your, the fifth item on, located on your stapled packet is the fiscal year twenty one twenty two citywide budget vehicle purchase across all funds. This is the listing, city manager would like that list out all vehicles that are proposed to be bought in this budget by fund with a grand total of five million two hundred and thirty nine thousand six hundred and seventy three.
Counsel, I'd also like to bring your attention, those have all been vetted through fleet maintenance. We have a software program called Fleet Wave we're working on to look at, you know, preventative maintenance, be able to track the vehicles. But every vehicle request was vetted through our superintendent to make sure it met the criteria for replacement. Or it's a new vehicle purchase for a new position.
And this was, this was my request of just have them approved all at once through the budget process and then as long as they don't go over?
Yes, sir, and additionally to that, talk to the city attorney in the budget resolution, the way he will draft that. So all these things, if it's budgeted, it doesn't exceed budget and it's within the city manager authority, I want to come back to you guys. So he'll be drafting that in the, in the resolution for the budget.
Then I assume that big section of all the chargers and Tahos is police?
Yes.
Yes.
And then, so it's cheaper for a Tahoe than it is a Charger? Is that why all a bunch of PDs are all going to Tahos?
The Chargers are thirty eight, the others thirty five.
Yeah, Dave Pearson, police department, we are no longer buying Chargers anymore.
Okay.
Our primary vehicle is a Ford Explorer.
Buying like twelve of them.
No, these are, no, these are replacement vehicles as noted, these are vehicles to be replaced.
Oh, so these are the ones that are going away?
Yes, sir.
I figure this was the purchase list, not the.
No, those are vehicles identified to be replaced.
And why do we have the price on them?
Yeah, so we get that, do we get that crossed up maybe?
No, they're, in the budget, they put that they would be replacing, if they meant to say that they're replacing a Dodge Charger with the vehicle? That's, is that what you're saying?
That we would replace the Dodge Charger.
Those are Explorers.
Those are Explorers in? Well, the budget says, the replacement says replacement, so they meant Dodge Charger, thirty eight thousand. So we could add what type of vehicle you're replacing it with.
Explorers.
Is that what you're saying?
I didn't write this up.
No, I know, this is straight from the budget, what you guys put in the one twenty. When you put a replacement, did you, did you put replacement, but you're replacing a Dodge Charger? Because it says Dodge Charger in the budget.
Placing a Dodge Charger for a Ford Explorer.
Okay, so that is it, so.
We're buying ten Explorers, two Tahos and an F-150. And a Partridge in the Pear Tree.
No, that's not correct, no. This, this list of vehicles here is what the vehicles are replacing. More or less, we probably replace it with twelve Ford Explorers.
Gotcha.
We'll revise the list and make sure you guys have the updated list.
But is that, so all the other departments, was it, this is what will be purchased? No? So this is the go-away list?
This is what it costs to replace these vehicles, right?
Yes.
That's the replacement cost.
Yeah, unfortunately, my apologies, we took the exact comments that they put in. So they put replacement like Dodge Charger, should have been replacement Ford Explorer, we can change that. So all Dodge Chargers will be Ford Explorers. And then anything else here, like a replacement for Ford Expedition, for example, we will verify that that is the car that is being replaced and not, you know. We wish we could be Houdini, but we can't, so we just read it straight up.
Okay, so the Rs are the ones going away, so like in fire, you have four going away, you're adding or replacing the pumper and then adding a brush truck?
Yes.
So how much are we spending?
Nine hundred and seventy nine thousand for the fire department in those.
Okay, so we'll just add a column of replacing the Ford Explorer and then they're getting a whatever else of the ad, okay.
Yeah.
So you guys just email that cleaned up?
Yes, we'll get it cleaned up and send it to you, sir.
Is this on? Jeff Cooper, I'm the deputy finance director. I'm actually the one that keyed all this, so I don't want police to get blamed for, for this. But anyway, so the fleet superintendent, Mark Katan, he has this nice, awesome spreadsheet with all the planned replacements for this year and the five years to come. So all I can see on the spreadsheet is what they're replacing, what's due to be replaced. I believe that the police Dodge Chargers are the only example of vehicles that are being replaced that are, that they're not buying the same thing. But on the list, it doesn't say what they're purchasing, so we, we can add that.
Okay.
So the dollar figures are right, you're projected five million dollars of vehicle replacement or additions for the fiscal year twenty one twenty two. We will amend the Dodge Chargers that are listed under the police to read Ford Explorers, but the pricing is. but the pricing is what was submitted for budget to either replace or add that vehicle.
Gotcha.
Other schedules, page two twenty-four. This is the proposed funded positions. You can see them by department, your full and part-time in current twenty-one and our proposed. On page two twenty-five, the current total for fiscal year twenty-one is seven hundred and thirty-seven with the requested proposed positions across the city. We are requesting to or proposing seven hundred and fifty-five. Page two twenty-six is that twenty-two-one twenty-two proposed budget for beginning positions, listing them out. On the left-hand corner, you will see the fund. These are your eleven positions, as you see for the general fund under oh-oh-one that we've already gone over. In water sewer, there's a line technician that is a new addition to the Manning. In water as well and sewer engineer, environmental utilities, new position one. One driver, I'm sorry. One driver collector, public works. One senior building inspector in the four sixty or the building fund. One plans examiner in the four sixty and two fleet technicians in the motor pool. Coming into your seven hundred and fifty-five new positions. For statistical purposes, as of the last payroll, we issued six hundred and thirty-eight payroll checks on staff. Page two twenty-seven is your general fund, inter-fund transfers. As you see below, your debt, just the schedule that you're normally used to seeing of our debt schedule. We will be, the plan is to be paying off the two leases we, that we have this year. And page two twenty-nine is your, only your one-twenty vehicle or, or purchases in the one-twenty for all departments, police, fire, civil information technology, building maintenance, totaling four million four hundred and eighty-five thousand four, excuse me, eight forty-nine. That is for the one percent. The strategy for the one percent this year is as we prepare to not know what's going to happen eventually in the future, instead of investing all our dollars and using the one-twenty, we've allocated it to use for vehicles, replacement and additions of that versus large capital needs. So we don't have to suffer as much or we can readjust if needed if something were to happen with that funding. So that's the embryo strategy at this point. Proposed capital on two thirty-two, this is just your fiscal year twenty-one twenty-two. You'll see your water fund, both standard water fund and the impact fee fund, the four seventy, as well as the four thirty and four eighty for sewer. And your general government capital, this is by funding source. This is just the twenty-two capital. We had about thirty, thirty-two to thirty, yeah, thirty-two million dollars, let's call it that, in capital right now that's rotating. The qualifications in order for us not to close a capital was you had to have had activity for the, in the last two years. So if you did not, we would literally either reallocate that project or close it down. That caused a potential of sixty-six projects that have had no activity in two fiscal years to close down or get reclassified. And we'll have that list for you as normal every year in the budget when we roll projects over. Currently, there's two point four million dollars in encumbrances in the general fund, three point four million dollars in encumbrances in the water fund and one point two million in sewer. You're highlighted in that proposed capital are three contracts we need to physically add into the budget. We've highlighted them for you. It's five hundred and twenty-five for reuse meters and the miscellaneous system repairs and the reuse. We've accounted for them here, but we need to add them into budget, so I'm making you aware of that change.
And the lift station repair and replacement is that one or two lift stations? Or three hopefully?
Yes, that would be for multiple lift stations. It really depends on the, how big the lift station is depending on, depends on how the, how much the rehab would cost. We can rehab anywhere from a hundred thousand to five hundred thousand dollar rehabs. But we have a list of lift stations by priority that need to be rehabbed.
And that's a fair budget amount for it?
Yes, we're, we're trying to do at least three per year.
Thank you.
Finally, here we are, the final two pages of this budget book and our intimate relationship ends here. Two hundred and, page two thirty-three fiscal year twenty-two-one, you see your taxable value, excuse me, tax rate at five point one-one-two-eight, the levied amount at fourteen million one hundred and eighteen thousand one-one-two and the amount collected was thirteen million four hundred and sixty-four thousand three hundred and seventy-eight at ninety-five point four percent. That was for fiscal year twenty-one. Finally, general fund, available fund balance, you see the policy in blue, dark blue, twelve point five. Your actuals for nineteen in red, estimated in twenty and twenty-one in green and purple respectfully. And we are projecting fiscal year twenty-two at twenty-six percent of fund balance, which puts us at thirteen and a half percent ahead. Also presented to the city manager as strategy is to set a fund policy for your enterprise funds. There is none that exists at this current time. We will be setting those thresholds for you as well. That, ladies and gentlemen, is your fiscal year twenty-one twenty-two budget, seven, one hundred and seventy-one million, two hundred and fifty-nine thousand five ninety.
This certainly represents a lot of work and we certainly appreciate the clarity and the simplicity you've put into it. It really helped a whole lot.
Good, I'm glad. Hopefully it works out as we planned.
Big change from the data sheets we used to have out here and we're all trying to roll them out.
Do you know where we were?
We can only get better, hopefully, so. We have the capital, which I figured just for sanity and time. This is a draft, just wanted to kind of present it to you. One, we brought a consultant in to review it, check it, create this whole item and taking in everybody, what everybody had said that they were looking for in five years, which was to know by fund, by type, by year. There are still changes that need to be done to the capital. One of them being that because of this new kind of benchmark year, obviously if you see some of the twenty-two, how much money we're calling versus what's really in budgets, completely different because we're not going to bond out twenty-two million dollars in one year. So we need to adjust that, I need to make you aware of that. But I can answer any questions you want in the capital. You know, as far as there's some projects haven't been moved as on priority. Some of them, we couldn't have twenty-three priority ones, you know. So we're setting realistic expectations, three to five real good wholesome capital projects. The goal and intent is for capital projects to be moving or completed hopefully in the funded year. That would be ideal. We are two and a half years behind and that just keeps, keeping money tied up where we can use it and reallocate it for other projects that are more eminent and more prioritized. So that's the strategy behind this thing. So feel free to dice it apart. I, I've sliced it a million ways. I still have some changes. I want to add some more information, but I figured I'd get your input on what you thought on your reviews and, you know, scrutinize away, I guess.
Ms. Matheny?
Thank you. I just want to have a conversation with the council here. So I know in the last couple of years, we've kind of, we've talked about not keeping the millage rate the same. You know, we keep having every year, the, you know, the millage rate stays the same, but I think we've got another two million dollars in amount levied between last fiscal year and this fiscal year. And I was trying to work the reverse math here and Ms. Colazo is going to be able to correct me. But I think if we went back to the twenty-thirteen millage before, we've, we've stayed at the five point one-one-two-eight. If we did the four point nine-one-two-eight, I think it's a differential of six hundred thousand dollars. I think if my math is, is right, it's six hundred and sixteen thousand dollars. So, you know, we do have twenty, how much do we have in our reserves? Like twenty-six percent in there, which are?
Fourteen, thirteen million?
Yeah, we have thirteen million dollars in there. I would like to take the millage back to the twenty-thirteen, if my math is correct.
I was going to call it the twenty-eleven because it's the same number.
Yeah, twenty-eleven sounds better. Take it back to the twenty-eleven millage rate. I just wanted to see what your other council were thinking. I, per my math backwards, because I had to figure out what the taxable value was and then go forward. It's a differential of six hundred and sixteen thousand dollars roughly. Is my math?
No, that's, I did the math for you on page twelve of the budget because our rollback rate would actually be four point eight-two-five. So that would produce fifteen million in a reduction of eight hundred and ninety-five thousand six hundred and fifty-six to the general fund. That would cause a reduction for residents of fifty-two sixty-one for an average property value of two hundred and thirty-two. That's at four point eight-two-five. And that's what our rollback rate was set at.
And rollback is to keep, I thought rollback was to keep the amount levied consistent.
Less out new construction.
Less out new construction, yeah.
Destruction, okay.
Yeah, so it would be four, four point eight-two-five is what I had.
Which was, would you say eight hundred?
Eight hundred and ninety-five thousand six hundred and fifty-six.
I would support going to a rollback rate. I don't know, just wanted to see what the other council's thoughts were on that.
I was, I was going to suggest the four point nine-one-two-eight.
Yeah, I'm, I'm fine with the four point nine. I mean, I just think we've been, we've been talking about it for a few years. Every year, you know, we're going up two million dollars a year in amount levied. I know we've got a really tight budget this year. Everybody's kind of tightened their belts and things, but I think also to help the residents, it's been a trying, tough year as well, so.
Well, I would certainly like to reduce the millage rate. What I'm really concerned about was the message that we certainly had delivered from Mr. Reinhardt regarding our police. That issue has got to be addressed and it's really frustrating when you try to increase the rate. You know, everybody's certainly in favor of decreasing, but when you increase it to try and get back to where you need to be to address that issue, we have a real problem in that department, big town that needs to be addressed. You know, this revolving door we got with all our staffs an issue, but that one really bothers me. I'm certainly sympathetic with wanting to try and reduce the millage, but I'm concerned about another bigger issue that we certainly need to be planning for. Yes.
Thank you, Mayor. I, I just want to jump in and echo what the mayor said. Not only are we deficient in our police services pay, we also have a staffing issue. I had committed to the police chief mid-year for what they call a power shift. And we're going to need eight people for that. I told him I'd look at it mid-year, so that's another cost that we need to bear. Additionally, we're in negotiations with the IAFF union with the firefighters and that's a three-year contract. And to keep them not falling in the same situation, that's about a three percent raise every year for the next three years. Again, those numbers are, you know, right around a million dollars. So I would just, you know, it's your, certainly your prerogative to do that, but I would advise against it. Jeff?
Jeff Cooper, deputy finance director. Can I be recognized?
Yes, you may.
Thank you. So per your discussion, just remember that in order to balance this budget, we have to pull on eight million dollars worth of prior year fund balance. So the amount of money you're looking at, we're already using. Plus, we have to maintain the GFOA sixteen point five percent. So basically, all of that money that you're mentioning is already being used. Plus, you mentioned at the beginning of the meeting about doing the three percent upfront instead of what was suggested is the one percent colon, the two percent merit. There's another three hundred thousand dollars. We're going to add some money for the shade at the splash pad. That's an additional cost that's not factored in this budget. So, I mean, me personally, I would not get in the habit of doing a rollback rate. If you're going to add police officers or increase their pay, that's got to come from somewhere. And if you did this, then your contingency is going to be like well, less than two million dollars. That's not very much. That's one, that's one bad, that's one bad day from.
Why, why is the contingency less than, we have thirteen million dollars?
That is correct, but eight million dollars of that is our, is included in this. We're pulling that. We're pulling that to balance this budget. You don't have eight million plus thirteen million. The eight million is part of that thirteen million.
So why does it say we have reserves of thirteen million then?
I, I think the way it's presented is.
Yeah, I mean, I, I mean, it reads to me like we have thirteen million, not that we have eight or five or whatever.
We have thirteen million, but you're using eight million to balance this budget. So maybe it's presentation like we're, we're giving you the total. Total available fund balance after this fiscal year is over is thirteen whatever million dollars. But for the next year's budget, you're snatching eight million dollars of that and using it to balance this budget.
Yeah, that's not clear to me.
That's why, that's why I'm here speaking, because I don't believe that we should consider doing the rollback rate because that's only going to save the average homeowner maybe forty or fifty dollars. And that assumes that the, their valuation of their house hasn't, hasn't gone up. So it's, it's not going to make a large difference to the citizens, but it could make a large difference to us. We still have fire department negotiations ongoing. Depending on the results of those, you could have some added costs to this budget that are not currently in there. As far as like wages, step increases, that's, that's not one hundred percent in this budget, depending on the outcome of the negotiations.
So on page two thirty-four, when it says in this twenty-two-one budget that we have thirteen million dollars, that's, it's not, that's not what we're?
Thirteen million dollars is what you have. That's what we're estimating. It's unaudited and that, that doesn't, doesn't, if you have the ACFR, it doesn't include anything that's not liquid, that's not cash, but thirteen million dollars. But in order to fund this budget, you are calling on eight million dollars of prior year.
I get that, but why is it showing me it's thirteen million dollars on the table? That's confusing.
Because in governmental accounting, when we're doing this fund accounting, we need the eight million to balance. That doesn't mean necessarily you've ever actually used the money. You haven't had actual expenditure, you haven't used it, but we need it to balance. So you have thirteen million out there. You're calling potentially that you could use eight million dollars because you're off balance already. And in order for us to balance it, we're calling on that money. That does not necessarily mean you'll use it, so you have thirteen million. But if something, and prior year fund balance has always been reported in this format to you.
I guess I just never knew that it was taken, I mean, am I the only one who's missed this point? I mean, I feel like it should be reflected in here that in your, it's thirteen million on paper, but you're using eight million of it to balance the budget. I mean.
But that's two million less than last year, so it was ten million to balance last year?
So on page twenty-nine, right, and the year before, I believe it was thirteen million.
Ten million.
But the year before, twenty nineteen, twenty, it was thirteen million. Because I gave a direction that I wanted to reduce that, using that fund balance and try to get the revenues equal expenditure. And then when we have money left over, that goes into reserves, not use it for next year's fund balance.
And I feel like this, the process gets better every year, but, you know, last year we added fifteen positions mid-year, which is kind of, some of those were probably known about of issues or needs that weren't really discussed and you just discuss that in six or eight more positions, like?
Right.
And we're talking about it today, but we're already talking about that.
And I should have referred to the matrix study. Remember, they did an operational study. They said, okay, you need this many positions, it can't even operate the city efficiently. They didn't tell us how much it costs. They didn't say it's, you know, so we had to balance that. And we had to add some positions, for example, at the fire department because we had an unexpected FMLA leave situation.
And I apologize if it's a confusing thing, but it has been my tenure here in two years that I've learned that a lot of things were maybe explained complicatedly, if that's even a word. And unfortunately, I've had the bad task, whatever you call it, I don't mind, but of simplifying it because we have two brain cells that we put together and we'd like to keep it simple. And that's really what we're doing and I'm not sure who has educated in what way and makes it confusing, like this thing is calculus two and it's very simple. So that's what we're trying to do is to explain that to you, just so you have all the facts and data. you have all the facts and data. Um, but we are concerned that a rollback rate would diminish your level of service now. We want, we want you to factor that in, that you got 13 million, you haven't had a call on it. You didn't call on the 10 million last year, but that's not a lot for a city to have in case the wheels fall off. It's the same concern we had with water, that they have no contingency if something happens right now, because we're just not making the money we need to, to support the business. We don't like to deliver that news, but that's the reality of it, and I'm trying to be very transparent to you. And I think my deputy's trying to do the same, is to give you all information, so you have it. Again, I apologize for previous, maybe they've complicated it too much in the relationship between prior year fund balance and what we're doing, but, um, that's what keeps us up late at night a little bit, because we want to do everything. And if you think about it, I got no additional fees added, um, only ad valorem is the revenue we got to try to get 18 new positions to give people the support they need in all funds. It's, it's a tough balance, so I just want you to consider that. And, um, I, I can't give raises and COLA and everything else with a tight budget like that, so I just want you to consider that, just putting as transparent as we can be with you.
Let me explain it like this. Okay, so we're pulling on $8 million worth of fund balance. So if we were to spend all of our budgeted amounts, salaries, benefits, uh, operational needs, if we were to spend it all this year, that would mean we have spent all that fund balance. So next year, we have zero fund balance to pull from. Depending on revenues, we could have a little bit, but it's not good practice to keep pulling on fund balance. That's why we're trying to reduce it, because of, eventually, it could run out. So that's, just keep that in mind. I mean, we're, we benefit by the fact that we're not fully staffed, so, I mean, the 10 police officer vacancies is not beneficial to the city, but it, it creates excess, um, funding and salary and benefits that we're not spending, so that creates your fund balance for the next year. But if by chance we were to be super efficient and spend it all, we would have enough to meet our GFOA standards, and that's about it. So then we could be in a pickle come next year if we don't have fund balance to like pull from.
I get, I get what you're saying, but I guess I'm more simplistic than like the way the government reports things. It's like if it was my checking account, and I'm budgeting based on me pulling money out of this, I think it should be reflected like that in the tables and in the verbiage, you know, upfront, just me personally. It's great, kudos if we don't do it, but, you know, like for being conservative in budgeting purposes, for me, just as like a checking account, right? Like, just as I got bills coming in, and, you know, it'd be great if a bill gets cheaper, but I, I don't know, I just...
We can do that for next year.
Yeah, we could definitely do that.
So it'll be reflected at least simpler for...
Or like an asterisk, like, hey, you're here, but we're using 8 million of it or something, you know?
No, definitely. Councilwoman Matheny, I mean, that's our commitment, is that when you guys give us feedback, we don't, we took an inherent, like, you know, what this council's experience was. We didn't want to offend and Barney style it down a little bit. We've, we figured that previous tenure, you guys have talked about this a million times, that was just redundant information, but you're absolut, if that's what you want and how you want it, we'll deliver it that way, because we want you to know that you, right now, as you call 8 million, you have those committed, literally, out of your savings account. So, um, I, we just didn't, just because we thought, we had never heard a complaint about the format and thought that worked.
I think we didn't realize what it was.
And that's okay, I just...
It's a misleading charge.
Yeah, 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 okay.
Ms. Trescu?
Yeah, I'm, I'm, I'm good. I'm, I would love to lower tax and stuff, but it was very concerning to me, especially in the police department. I would rather go, you need to fix that problem, Mr. City Manager, or we're gonna probably come after the millage rate next year. If we can fix the police department or staff, it sounds like, um, and get them the, the money they need. So the 600 or the 800, or wherever number you want to play with, let's see, maybe if, if, uh, we can use or try to guide that to the places where we need it, the police department and some of the other staff, it seems like. I would rather keep the billage rate the same and you fix that problem, but I don't want to lower the millage rate, and now you don't have that money for ad valorem. That goes right into ad valorem or general fund. I can use that for anything, paying staff, things like that, so.
And that's a commitment finance is done, and, you know, even coming on board, that I don't focus on cutting expenditures. Everybody always does. They focus on the $50 paper clip. I'm trying to focus on the revenue, make sure these cylinders are all on first before we start gouging. And once I tell you the cylinders are on, they are not all on right now. They are better, because we're getting better, but I think it's unfair to the residents, unfair to you all, as your responsibility, and unfair to staff to just cut, because this right here is just a prime example of trying to live a little bit within our means, even though we know we're already out of bounds, because we don't want to do certain things. We get that, but, um, you know, our commitment is, like I said, to get that, that better, just to give you all the data that, you know, and, and make sure, like I said, all your cylinders are on before you really have to make any decisions that could impact, like I said, service levels or anything of that nature.
You know, another issue that I'm concerned about that would really make me hesitant to lower the millage, as much as I would like to support, uh, the generosity of doing that, I, I think that the inflation rate is, we, we hadn't even seen the tip of the iceberg yet. And I think so much of this budget i- is based on numbers that you've gotten now, and I'm believing six months from now, these numbers are gonna change, a lot of them, because you're not gonna be able to, to get things for the numbers that you're, you've based your budget on now. And I think that's going to be a big, big ball of confusion and challenge, uh, before this year's over.
Yes, sure. And I, I appreciate you saying that, because that is the balancing act we have right now. We always say budget is an art, art form. Um, we anticipate that projects right now, where they're at and where they're estimated, should come in way higher. We don't know what that pendulum looks, so we're trying to get as close to those variables as we possibly could and, and deliver. That's why we streamline the capital for that reason, is because we need to let the supply chain reabsorb again, and, and, you know, people were buying at $80, right, wood, and now look at where it's at. It came down, and, and they're not trends. It's, we need to levelize a little bit. So it's a hard balancing act we have right now, um, but we're progressing, you know, just slowly. Um, but these are the impacts that we talked about that were untangible. We didn't know how COVID was gonna hit us. It might not hit the bottom line all at once, but raw materials, food, um, everything is going up, you know, um, and we only have so many purse strings to pull on. We, we just, you know, um, we don't have the commercial space overall, too. We're working on that, you know, so, um, I think it's not a conservative budget. I think it's a budget that says hold and do what we can do right now realistically to be able to assess if something happens. You know, we need to be prepared for the what if. I'll be quiet now.
I don't, I don't think we have a consensus to...
That's elegant.
To, uh, lower the millage rate.
Do we have a consensus for me to work with the police chief and come back with, fix those issues?
I, I feel like we've been talking about this for a long time. I don't know why we haven't.
Well, again, we have a collective bargaining agreement. I've been negotiating with them. We're in the contract. Um, and remember, when we do those increases in the collective bargaining, it goes all the way up the scale, right, right to the, to the police chief. So I have to fix it all on the whole department. So we have been, um, since I've been manager, been very serious about increasing their pay. Uh, we've done a, we did a pay study in 2018, and we did a COLA on top of that. We've done a COLA every year. We did a mid-year of pay adjustment. So, I mean, it's like, we just keep falling behind the curve. Um, but I'll work with finance and the police chief and see what we can come up with and bring it back to you guys for further action.
Especially because if it's a mid-year change, it'd be nice to know about at least the, the magnitude of that now.
I, I think we can get it done here in the next month.
Okay.
Yep. And we, we, we can't keep it, the revolving door that we...
No, sir.
We have with our city staff, certainly not our police and fire. It's just a, a problem. Do we have anything else?
We needed, um, a little bit of direction as to the note on the COLA and merit. Um, if you go with the 3% all COLA, if that's where you're trying to go, we would reduce contingency by about 350,000, 390 to cover the, that added change. So, um, just need to know that if we need to work those numbers, we would reduce council contingency by that enough to cover that.
I think we need to stay with your recommendations personally.
I'm COLA.
I thought you said you were cool.
I'm COLA. No, 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 no. I do, COLA, I mean, merit just causes, you, you anger the employees, because he gets a merit raise, I don't get a merit raise, he gets 1%, or, you know, whatever. Like, you anger staff, you cause all kinds of problems that, and you cause, in my mind, I know there's differing opinions, but it causes compression.
Well, I'm in favor of merit. Yeah. I don't, I don't know it enough to, we get bonuses, so, you know, totally different.
Right. In jewelry, in gold. I, I'm fine with the, the recommendation that was made by staff. I mean, it's, you guys are the ones that are gonna have to deal with the ramifications of however the numbers shuffle out.
Yeah, it seems day-to-day to me.
Okay. You have direction now?
Yes, sir.
Anything else?
I, I just want to tell you we had a major water main break, and I just got texts that half the city was out of water, so should be back online here pretty soon.
Will it flush the residue?
I don't know. I have a headache already.
Now, when you have a main, a main break like that, you have a major water boil deal.
Wow. Fun city.
Was there any significant, um, notes or anything that I should take or you will send for the capital that I should know about? I just want to make sure before editing.
Again, I thank you for all of your work. I thank all the staff for, uh, all your hard work. Thank the council for, uh, your hard work here also. And with that, we will be adjourned.